I'm going to read the legal notice of the public hearing. My name is Susan Bransfield. I'm the first selectwoman in the town of Portland. And I'm joined tonight by Jim Tripp, Selectman Jim Tripp, as well as Selectman Mike Pelton, and Selectman Ralph Zampano, and Selectman Lou Peir in the audience, and Rick Shar, Selectman Rick Shar, as well. Hoping that Selectman Ben Sur will join us in a few minutes. I'm going to read the legal notice of the public hearing for the Board of Selectmen for Thursday, August 22, 2019, at 7:30 PM in the Portland Library. Pursuant to Section 7-3 of the Connecticut general statutes and Section 503(c) and 506 of the Portland Town Charter, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Portland, Connecticut on Thursday, August 22, 2019, at 7:30 PM at the Public Library, Mary Flood Room, 20 Freestone Avenue, Portland, Connecticut, regarding the proposed purchase of real property located at 222, 230, and 248 Brownstone Avenue, Portland, Connecticut. At the hearing, all interested persons may appear and be heard, and written communications will be received. This was dated Portland, Connecticut, the 5th day of August, 2019. Susan Bransfield, First Selectwoman. I wanted to do a brief introduction, and we have some information to share with you. If you attended the two site visits that we had back in June, some of it may be repetitive, but we have also some additional information for you tonight. And we are going to be having some pictures and information, visual information, from Jim Tripp. Jim has done some drone video, as well as photographs of the property. We have Andy Ives from Langin, who is the surveyor. He has done a full survey of the property, and he'll briefly talk a little bit about that. Mary Dickerson, our Economic Development Planner, is here tonight. She works for the Town of Portland, and Mary's done a lot of work on this project in terms of the economic development perspective. We have members of the Economic Development Commission here as well, and they may also comment on this. Mark Lewis, who is from the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, is here tonight. And Mark will be talking about the liability protection that is available to the town, which we have applied for, for the brownfields properties. One of the things that municipalities are always concerned about legitimately is the limit to any liability in the future for the town. So I look forward to hearing a few words from Mr. Lewis tonight. In terms of procedure tonight, if you would like to speak, you can sign up at Sharon Hoy's desk. What that allows is for us to know how to spell your name and where you live, because lots of times when people come up to the podium, it's hard to hear your name. So you don't have to sign up, but you're certainly welcome to do that. We'll call on you at any rate. And there will be another public hearing on Tuesday, August 27, same place, 7:30, here in the Public Library. We'll repeat what we're doing tonight, so if you have some friends or neighbors that weren't able to come tonight, we'll invite them to come next week. And that is in anticipation of a town meeting, which has been noticed. The town meeting is going to be September 4, that's a Wednesday. That'll be at 7:30 PM, and that will be in the Brownstone Intermediate School on Main Street in the auditorium. That'll allow for a more comfortable place for people to gather and to be able to vote. Because the project requires that we purchase the property, any property that's worth over $10,000 that the town decides it wants to purchase has to first go to the Planning and Zoning Commission under Statutes 8-24, which this has done. And they unanimously, Planning and Zoning unanimously endorsed this project in keeping with the plan of conservation and development. We need to also have public hearings, which we're having two. We only need one, but I thought it was important to have not only the site visits, but also two public hearings for people. And then because it is over $10,000 in value, we do have to go to a town meeting. There is no planned borrowing. We are not borrowing any money for the purchase of this land. When we talked about the potential purchase back in February of 2018, we had anticipated that we may put this out when we were going out for bond for the other projects that we're doing. But we now in 2019, there are sufficient dollars within the land acquisition funds. And I'm going to briefly go over a little bit of the money piece, and I'm also going to give you a little bit of some of the history of why we're here today. We'll start with the history. In 2013, the town decided to do a Phase 1 environmental review of this property, which is really a historical perspective of this property. It had been vacant for many years, without any jobs and without any improvements, and it was deteriorating. John Beletti, who owned Connecticut Tire and Asphalt, owned this property and maintained it for many years, and unfortunately died unexpectedly with no will and no apparent heirs. So the property did go to his 90-plus-year-old mother, and within a few months, she passed away. So it went to a nephew, who lives in, I believe, in West Virginia. And so a lot of the work that we have done in terms of the analysis of this land and the analysis of its economic development potential for Portland has been slow. And the reason it's been slow is that it's very difficult to work with the estate. It's been very difficult to, time-wise, to get information back and forth. And as you know, last February, when we looked at the public hearing, we talked about a pipeline that is in the road, that we needed to work with the seller on this past year in order to determine its quality, what kind of condition that pipe is in. I'm pleased to report that the seller paid for Core-Tec, which is a professional company, to test the pipe. Previous to that, they removed all oil that was in the pipe, and they capped it. And then when Core-Tec came in, they inserted nitrogen, which is an inert gas, into the pipe to make sure and to determine if there would be any leaks in the pipe. And the test results came back, I believe in May, and they determined that the pressure of 50 pounds per square inch was held for 24, 48 hours, and then some, which indicates there was no leakage of the gas, no leaks within the pipe. So the pipe has been capped, and there's essentially nothing in it. And the three properties that you're looking at up here were part of a vast amount of analysis that has been done by Ty &amp; Bond. And Ty &amp; Bond was hired by the town to do the Phase 1, which is an historical perspective of what had happened on this property, which is quarrying operations many, many years ago, and then more recently, home heating oil and some gasoline and other types of petroleum products on this land. The Phase 1 determined that additional research, additional borings, additional studies needed to be done. So the town applied for a grant with the Department of Economic and Community Development, which is an investigative grant to investigate what is on this property, and is it something that is capable of being cleaned up and brought to remediation and revitalization? And we received from the state a $200,000 grant. It went out to bid for a vendor, and Ty &amp; Bond was the successful bidder. And for $200,000, they did several borings. We have a map that you can look at at the break, at the end, that's under my easel, that's closer to the table. And it shows where there are some environmental concerns, as I said, primarily petroleum-based products that need to be either mitigated and/or removed and/or dealt with in a prescribed manner that would be under the auspices of DECD, as well as the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. And that's something that Mark Lewis is going to address, in that while we know what's there, we know how it can be remediated, we also need that assurance that we will not face any further liability, based on the fact that these studies have been done and accepted and reviewed by the state agencies. When we learned the reports, which are in the front of the table in front of you, the Phase 1, the Phase 2, and the Phase 3, which outlines not only the historical perspective, but also the tests that were done, as well as the levels of contamination, and then a remediation plan for how that will be cleaned up. And those are available for you. So in 2016, we had completed quite a bit of Ty &amp; Bond's work, and the town applied for a remediation grant. These are very highly competitive. All the towns and cities in Connecticut apply for these grants. Many of them get them. The Town of Shelton, I'm so impressed by the work they have done in remediation of their brownfields. They've received multi-millions of dollars from the state of Connecticut to bring back their former industrial blighted waste sites, and they're doing quite well. I know Mark has worked on quite a few of those sites. Glastonbury has had some work done, as you may have seen their boathouse and their fields and their community house, which is also a senior center. Those were all brownfields, not unlike what you're seeing here, except they were larger. And they have been remediated and redeemed and brought back to life, as has Goodwin College in East Hartford. That was also a brownfield in East Hartford that was brought back. There's countless others that are available, and you can look at those on the DECD website. In terms of the competitiveness for the remediation grant, we presented to DECD and a panel of folks in 2016, and Portland, I'm proud to say, was ranked number one in that Round 9 of remediation grants. Being ranked number one indicates that the state of Connecticut sees this as a very, very viable economic development site. On the Connecticut River, it will be cleaned up to improve our Connecticut River, and it's also, remember, coming from the Economic and Community Development Department. And they ranked this number one because they see the viability and the very important economic regional improvement that these sites will give to not only Portland, to also Connecticut. So after we received that grant, we were told we had to buy the property. And being that, I think, the Board of Selectmen, both this board and the one previous to this board, were very conservative in our approach to any project that we take on. And so we wanted to make certain that all of the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted before we brought this to you in terms of recommendations for the purchase. And even after we had brought it to that public hearing, there was additional work that we did do, and we feel confident in bringing this project to you because we know not only is this a project that will happen in Portland, but we are partnering with the state as well as the federal government. Mary Dickerson will touch on some work that she's been doing, along with Kristi Carpino and Norm Needleman, who had approached the Environmental Protection Agency and told them, our federal agencies, that this project is commencing, and we want to get their support as well. The other very important part of this is that I wanted to make certain that the grant that we received for $750,000 was going to be there. Given the experience that we have with state funding, we want to make certain that those dollars are there. I checked in 2018. I checked again at the end of 2018, and Benu Chandri, who is the consultant that works with us on this project from DECD, came down for a visit, and she did a site visit and determined that this project is very viable, very interested. And I said to her a couple of things about some ideas we had, and she said, "Anything that you do must be very much in keeping with economic development, because this is such a viable site for improvements to your grant list, as well as the regional improvement of this area." So I called again this week and have verification in an email that the dollars indeed of $750,000, which has a 20% contingency when this application was made. Ty &amp; Bond made sure that there would be sufficient funds. So that's good news. Added to the 200, so there's the $200,000 grant that we received to make the studies and determinations, the $750,000 is waiting for the town. And we also incurred the expense and paid for a property survey that Andy Ives will talk about. We did pay for the additional nitrogen so that we would be certain that pipeline was well-tested. That was $2,000 that will be paid for at the closing. We also did ground penetrating radar, so we know exactly where the pipeline is located, and that was, as I said, $2,800. The town put a $19,000 deposit to the seller back in, I want to say, 2016, 2017. There's also legal costs, which have been incurred, and some of the legal costs we're able to determine, others we're not, because in terms of the general operations of the town, we pay for legal costs, and they're not always enumerated. In summary, the purchase price is $385,000. The closing cost would be $15,500. The deposit would be credited to the town, which is $19,000. So the net amount that we anticipate that would be needed to bring to closing would be $381,500. And that would come from revenue sources that we already have in the Land Acquisition Number 75 Fund, the Land Preservation Number 58 Fund, as well as potential for contingencies, which is line item 01095. The land itself gives us about $16,000 a year in property taxes, and the value that the assessor has set on it, I'm going to say is about, Mary, is it about $600,000?
I believe currently, that's what it is.
That's what the assessed value is for this parcel. So the $385, we felt was a reasonable number, in that this property is not derelict in paying its taxes. It's always paid its taxes, and we really recognize the value of this property. And we're going to be talking a lot more about the value and some of the economic development initiatives that we feel will happen. The last thing I want to just close with at this point is that, thinking that the project proceeds, the land is purchased, the first thing that I will recommend, and the selectmen will determine, is a redevelopment committee, a brownfield redevelopment committee that would have to immediately get started to determine how we want to see this site improved. Is it commercial? Is it a restaurant? Is it a dock? Is it a boat launch? Is it going to be a site that will allow for people to go fishing, to be able to access the river, that you can't publicly access right now? And that will determine how the RFP is issued for the company that will do the cleanup, and it also determines how that cleanup will occur, because a plan will be in place that the community is in favor of, that the community wants to see happen, and that is in keeping with the environmental standards that DEEP and DECD will put upon us. So it's a project that we have been working on since 2013. It's something that's part of our plan of conservation and development, and we believe that it is something for you to very seriously consider and to ask lots of questions tonight. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jim Tripp, who's going to do a visual for us on the property. Jim?
Thank you, Susan. First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and it is warm in here. I will try to go through and give everybody the information and try to be relatively brief, but please, if somebody sees something or wants to ask a question about a slide, feel free. I'd rather we go through this and everybody get the information they want. The reason we opened up with this particular slide is, I think, a good idea for everyone who's not as familiar to have the context of these three properties and where they are located. Right now, this is, you know, 222, 230, and 248. But the key here is that it's this bridge of land that is in between the Brownstone Exploration and Discovery Park, which has been a fantastic engine for the town in terms of revenue and economic development, and another, I think, one of our great assets that we don't have an opportunity to utilize enough, which is the Connecticut River. A lot of communities are able to leverage having the river, you know, along their shores, and that's some, these properties may give us that opportunity to also do that. When we look here, this is 222. Right now, it's the southernmost parcel. It is adjacent to the existing facilities now. This is part of, basically, I believe, the old Triram and basically the asphalt plants. And these tanks here, these are no longer active, but these are not part of the properties that we're looking to purchase, but this does run along the border. This property right now is being used by Brownstone Exploration for parking when they need to use it during the summer. This is the middle parcel. This is 230. Again, same situation. You can obviously see the growth in the wooded border to the river, which prevents some of the views, obviously, right now. But again, this gets used for parking, you know, during the summer by Brownstone Exploration. The two of them together to give you, again, an idea of the type of properties that we're looking at. It's important to note, all three properties taken together are 5.28 acres. So we're talking about, you know, a purchase price of $385,000, considering the assessed value, and taking into account it's 5.28 acres. That's all important information for us to have. This is the Tank Farm, and again, I like this particular slide because it gives you an idea of really, you see here, sort of the residual of this being an industrial property, the tanks, the refueling depot, and then the office building that was on the site. But you also see what it borders and the beauty of what it borders, which can obviously be part of the redevelopment and taking advantage of that. This is the, you know, looking at the entire property. This is looking, this is facing north, and obviously, again, looking at the tanks. But up here, this is also on the property. This is, this particular garage is there. It's actually in pretty good shape for, you know, it's got some broken windows, but internally, when you look at it, it doesn't, it's not, doesn't have a lot of water in it. It's actually in, for an older facility that's been sitting vacant for as long as it has, it's in pretty good shape. What we do find here is that this is actually the high point of these properties. So this structure up here, where I'm circling, is not something that we have to worry about. This is currently not in the floodplain. And again, just a good idea to take a look at the tanks. These during, as part of the remediation, would be removed. They've already been disconnected from the pipeline and drained. There is some residual value in these, so as we go through and work through the remediation, these would be taken down, and hopefully, these would actually provide some value coming back, whether, in terms of how they're disposed. And again, just an area view, because I think it's, one of the reasons that we're doing this particular portion of the presentation is so that people could get a real good visual of what we're talking about. It's not easy to do when you're standing at the fence looking across, but this gives you that different perspective. Here, one of the things, if you look at, here's the retaining wall that's in place, that really was in place as a buffer in case you had some sort of a leak, et cetera. But when you look in back of it, there is actually still a considerable amount of land from that wall that goes back to the river. This is also, this is a privately-owned facility, right? It's the old Coast Guard facility that was there. And in this section over here, where I'm highlighting with the cursor, this is actually what would be the southernmost parking in the, for the riverfront park that neighbors this property. This road here is actually, is also, this is a public road, so there's no issue. This is all, from a town perspective, would all be contiguous. Again, taking a look, gives you an idea of where the parking is. You can actually see some cars in here that are, I'm hopefully having a good time at the Exploration Park. And you can again see, you know, this is the wall here, and this gives you a better view of just how much land is also in back of this, back of this wall. So there's obviously a lot of conversation about how this would all get developed from an economic perspective, but that does not mean that it would preclude also public access to the river in the overall development. Again, same thing, wanted just a slightly different perspective of it. This right here, I know there were some questions, I believe, with, you know, Facebook that we had talked about this, but basically, this is actually a tree that gets hung up. This is where the old docks were, and there was a tree that was caught up in the pilings. We have some better pictures of that. But that's one of the areas, is that for folks that are familiar with the river in this area, one of the, one of the assets, one of the values of this property is that the deep-water access is actually on the eastern side of the river here, the deep-water channel. So when we go to, you know, adjacent to this, and when this gets redeveloped, that means you do have a viable, there is going to be viable access from the river into the property if it's, if that becomes part of the overall development. Again, there was a question that had, somebody wanted to see this from the river, and so we can actually take a little bit closer look at it. But this is the old dock that was there. There's the piling from the deep-water dock that's still in place. Again, now looking on the backside of the tanks to orient yourself, the refueling station, and again, the office building. And just again, the overall context, there's your access to the riverfront park. There's the complete parking area. This is the area that was discussed several years ago, that was also prospective boat launch, which actually has a lower-lying area in here to get down to the river. So there's a lot of potential in this overall area for development. And again, this is 248, looking at it from directly above. There's the garage we talked about to orient yourself, Brownstone Avenue. And looking north, I mean, south, looking north. This is, wanted to make sure we took a couple of pictures while we're here, because again, this is the direct neighbor to the east. This is Brownstone Discovery Park. We also have, in this shelf over here, this is the new, basically, it's currently being developed, which is going to be Quarry View. This is going to be the new initiative to actually develop a park that's going to provide some, basically, some camping access, et cetera, for folks to have, I think, some spectacular views and access to that part of the park. Again, this just shows the overall, the rest of the area and the quarries. Part of this is when we look at these properties, right, again, they're the residual of the industry that's gone down, you know, that's been used down there for years. But as this area's being developed now, the, you know, the Brownstone Discovery Park, I believe that in the years it's been operating, I think it was 2005 the contract was signed, and a couple of years of the ramp in terms of the contract and bringing it up in terms of the revenue that we receive from the town. But we have, as First Selectwoman Bransfield had indicated, you know, you have a run rate that's, you know, around $400,000 a year that's coming in revenue, because of some forward thinking on the investors that developed this parcel. But also, you know, I think over the entire life of this, it's been a little bit of over $3 million of income to the town. So in this particular case, because this is a lease arrangement, we've been able to generate revenue that helps our town, at the same time, we still overall own the properties. And again, I just left this one in because the day that we were there, it was, there was a lot of activity. You could see the folks that it was splashing, and it's actually was a pretty warm day, and there was some good activity, and the parking was filling up nicely. I put this slide in here because, again, I just want to give you a better view. These tanks in this parcel up here, this is not something that would go away, but right now, this has been, I think, inactive now for a couple of years. It's still under lease by the company that has the rights to use it, but there's currently not producing any product and hauling anything out of that location. One of the questions that came up, actually, at the very first meeting that we did at the riverfront, the informational session was, "What does it look like from the bank?" So we actually took a ride out, and we took some pictures. And basically, the bank itself along this parcel is not a vertical wall. You'll see where the Coast Guard facility is, that there's a vertical wall there, but this is actually graded down, can't say it's two to one, but it is graded down to the water. It goes up the top of that ridge, actually, when you look at the It goes up the top of that ridge, actually, when you look at the topographic maps, is 14 or 15 feet is where it goes up to. I can tell you that in the spring this year, we had some pretty significant flooding on the river. We hit a major flood stage of 10 and 1/2 feet. At that time, the water did not impact these properties at all. So this is something that, you know, it is in a floodplain, but even when we've seen some major flooding, these properties are still, they still have a pretty good rise above the water. This is actually the piling in the old dock. This is where the deep water dock area exists today, even though, again, the dock itself is in disrepair. And again, just another picture. This is what you see. Basically, it's the rock retains the bank, and if these trees have actually grown up, we saw a picture that was presented at one of the informational sessions. It actually showed before any of the trees and foliage had come back in after this property was set up. And this actually was, it was a nice evenly graded property going up, and it was cleaned out. And I said, this is the vertical wall that I was telling you about here. I actually tried to look on here and see if I could, and a lot of times when you see this, you'll see footage markers of how high you are so that boats would know how much water they can draft. In this particular case, I didn't see one, although I do see a ladder that goes up for them to access. But basically, this border would be the border, the northernmost border of the property along the Connecticut River. All right, that's back to those, and really, just, just kind of putting it all together when you look at it. 5.28 acres, looking at how we would redevelop this property. See, hopefully, this will get moving. There we go. One of the things we look at from an economic development perspective is that in addition to the benefit Brownstone Exploration Discovery has provided to the town on a recurring basis, it also brings 80,000 to 100,000 people to the town. So that's a tremendous amount, you know, every year. That's a tremendous amount of folks that are coming down to visit this area, which I think would be something that would be attractive to prospective developers. That was 248 with the tanks, 230 in the middle. And again, we did this just because, I can't go any higher than 400 feet, so this is one way for you to see all the properties. And I can, but the FAA tells me I can't. But, you know, so it's just a way for you to see the properties all in one shot. And just to give a little bit, a little bit lower level and a closer look, you know, of the garage. And again, there's the fueling depot, the office, and then we'll spin and give you a little bit closer look at the tanks. And then going down the properties. So there's a lot of potential here for development. I think it's something that I hope everyone asks a lot of questions about, and takes the opportunity to get all of those answered tonight, so. Thank you. That's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Who have questions to?
Okay.
Andy, I thought maybe you could give a few comments?
If I speak over here.
You won't be picked up on the camera, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Just identify yourself.
Good evening. I'm Andy Ives from Langen Engineering. I'm the land surveyor for this project. The town hired Langen Engineering to perform an ALTA land survey, which is a titled survey that's used for purchase of commercial properties. The main reason for that is to establish where the property lines are, so the town council and town members can see where the property lines are, where the features on the property are. We also performed a topographic survey, so there's, you have contours and elevations, so the survey can be used as the project moves forward for future development. Any developer that wants to look at the site can use the topographic map to see what they could possibly develop. It also shows easements and encumbrances on the properties. There are two easements that burden the property. There's a sewer easement that goes across for the main sewer line that goes through the riverfront park and eventually over to the sewage treatment plant. And there's also a drainage easement for a catch basin that's on Brownstone Ave., which does eventually daylight out to the Connecticut River. It's a 10 or 15-foot wide easement that the drainage facilities obviously can be rerouted at a future date. The survey can also be used for the basis of an environmental land use restriction map, which, as part of the development process through the Brownfield program, most likely in environmental land use restriction would be put on the property. That survey would be filed at the town clerk's office with whatever the restrictions are. I would imagine most likely it would be something for a cap or something on the entire property. So as well as showing the town what's actually there, what they're purchasing, helping the town council, it's also going to be used for future development. Thank you.
Mike Thompson had said he wanted to say a few words. Okay, okay. Then we'll go to Mary Dickerson.
Hi, I'm Mary Dickerson. I do economic development work for the town of Portland. They've given you a lot of information on what's going on now, but what I want to do is just give you a little bit of background, because Susan had asked me to prepare a frequently asked questions and answers kind of presentation. And one of the things I get most often is, why the heck would anybody want a contaminated piece of property? And the answer is, goes back almost 20 years ago. So when we purchased the Quarry property, Susan DeSina was the town planner, and they went out and received a grant and did a study called the Carolard Johnson and Associates Report, which is the Portland Downtown and Quarry's master plan. And these properties at the time were still active, but they were targeted in that master plan for development of the town of Portland. So it wasn't that they looked at this and said, oh, we want to get rid of these businesses, these are blighted properties. It was just the idea that in creating a master plan for our downtown, that they at that time identified these properties as vital to development, to connect our downtown Main Street area with the Connecticut River. So over the last 19 and 1/2, now almost 20 years, these properties have always been on the radar. So it's not something new, it's not something that just came up because the properties came up for sale. So in 2004, they took this master plan, and they received another grant, and they had the Williams Group Real Estate Advisors come in and do a feasibility study. And this feasibility study was to look at the types of uses based on everything, things like transportation, the makeup of our community, incomes. They took all kinds of data and financial information, engineering information, and put that together to come up with some uses. And so when we look at this area, we think of it as an industrial zone, but what was actually done was a riverfront overlay zone was created. So there is already zoning in place for commercial development on this site. So then we fast forward to 2000, and I guess it was around 2009, when the business started to close, and people would say, well, obviously, it's not a viable location. The pipeline that we had talked about before is the reason that these tanks became less needed. So oil used to come up the river on a barge, and it's part of the reason that my husband and I got transferred to New York City, because the Coast Guard wasn't needed there anymore for these barges. The pipeline brought the oil to these tanks. And so that dock has been deteriorating because the barges didn't come up there anymore. Anyone that's a boater knows that the depth of that channel has decreased also over the last almost 30 years. So from something that was around, I would say, at one point, it was a 35, 38-foot draft, in some areas it's 15 feet now, because there's no need for them to dredge those channels. So a lot has changed over the time that this master plan was done, but also, a lot of the work that was part of that master plan has been completed. So those of you like me that are old enough to remember when there used to be houses on the end of Middle 6th Avenue when the road didn't go down, we've put that road through that was part of the master plan. So the connection of Middle 6th Avenue to Brownstone Avenue. The creation of the riverfront park was part of that plan. The addition of bathrooms, the addition of a paved parking area. It was really fortuitous that this agreement came up with the Brownstone Exploration and Discovery Park, because we have a national historic landmark that has one of the most used attractions in the state, and I believe it's the biggest outdoor adventure park in the state. So all of this came together, and then this property became available. So it wasn't that the town targeted a blighted property, it was the town has a master plan. We're now, I'm now the third one to do economic development and planning work since this effort started. Susan DeSina was here. When she left, Deanna Rhodes took over. When Deanna Rhodes left, I took over working on this project. So there's a lot of history to it, and I don't want anyone to think that this is something that came up and there's, it's just a financial deal. There's a lot of planning that went into this, there was a lot of studies done. Couple of the other questions I get all the time are, well, how much can we sell them for? I'm a financial nerd, so if you hear the call for 100 basis point cut to interest rates, I can tell you, that economics will tell you, if the interest rate drops, the sales prices increase. That's just because people can afford more if they're paying less interest. So I don't have a crystal ball. I can't say when these properties are cleaned up in, we'll say, three years, what the properties are going to be worth. You can back into numbers, there's ways that you can look at what somebody would want as a return, and you can back into what they would pay for a purchase price based on that return. But we cannot get an appraisal for what a cleaned up property would be, because that appraisal is not going to hold over the next three years. I can tell you that the people that I work with, as far as looking for either tenants, whether the town chooses to lease or sell the property for development, CERC, the Connecticut Economic Resources Center in Rocky Hill, has a site finder group, and they, they're basically like, you know, one of those online match services. You send them the properties that you have available, and they have a stockpile of businesses and developers looking for places. This is how this would be done. This Brownfields Committee would be formed, and the committee would work with CERC during this period. We would work with real estate developers that come to town, and then that decision would be made. Do you sell the property and let someone develop it? And do we take that revenue? Or do we supervise the development of the property and lease out, as we did with the Discovery Park, and remain owners of the property but receive revenue from leases? They will most likely be capital leases. That means they would be given all the rights and responsibilities of ownership. They would build the buildings on the property in exchange for a long-term lease. So yes, there's a lot of questions, and I know that they seem overwhelming, but in the business world, these are the kind of deals that happen all the time. Mark Lewis from DEEP was very gracious to come tonight. Mark works in the brownfield liability area. And a lot of the questions, well, why would the town take on the liability? So Connecticut has something called the Transfer Act, and if you sit there mindlessly listening to the evening news while you're having dinner, you'll hear about the Transfer Act coming up repeatedly. What it requires is that for a property that has known contamination to be sold, someone has to sign a document that is returned to the state, and either the buyer of their property or the seller has to take responsibility for that cleanup. That's most likely why this property didn't sell, because somebody would come and look at it, and they would find out what the contamination was, and they would get an estimate on the cleanup, and they were not going to buy the property and commit themselves to the cleanup, and the seller wasn't going to commit to it either. So then we say, well, why would the town buy it? Because there are programs in the state that allow municipalities to buy these properties and exempt themselves from the liability. And it is done specifically so towns can control their future with properties like these, and so they don't become blighted, empty properties. During the time this property was on the market, the only inquiries I had were for surface storage of heavy equipment. So these were people that would buy old industrial equipment, you think caterpillar-type equipment. They would come, they would park them out, they would store them on site. They weren't going to build any buildings. This was going to be inventory, so anybody that's familiar with how the assessment program works in town, that's inventory is not personal property, so would not be subject to tax. If they didn't build any new structures, then there's no additional tax. If there were vehicles related to that business, then yes, we would tax the vehicles. But there was not going to be any real new development on the property, it was just going to become storage. So that was when the town said, nothing is happening, this is part of our master plan, let's reach out and talk to the owners of the property and see what their intentions are. And so that's how we are where we are today. I have prepared FAQ, it's very similar to what was handed out at the riverfront, so if you were there already, but I'll leave them over here for people to take tonight. They're very simple questions about our land acquisition fund. If you have questions about what a cap means, you've heard people talk about just, Andy talked about the property would be capped. What an ELUR is, an environmental land use restriction. We already have properties in town that have environmental land use restrictions, and we deal with them in the land use office on a regular basis. The property taxes are in here, their annual property tax for, as of this year, was $16,415.44. Talks about liability protection, which I will let Mark get into, because from a state end, he can really give you all of the programs that are available. And then basically, what happens if the town doesn't purchase the parcels? The status quo remains. They will go back up for sale. I would imagine that the Transfer Act would prevent them from being sold to a private entity, because I don't think that the person that inherited those properties has the resources, and I don't know of any buyer, there may be one out there, that would be willing to take on that liability at the time of sale and guarantee cleanup. The owner of the property could lease them to an industrial business that would use them for surface storage, as the couple of inquiries that came in wanted to do. So that's how we got to where we are, and that's where we are right now. So I guess, Mark, I'll turn it over to you if you want to talk about the liability relief
Thanks, Mary. I'm Mark Lewis. I'm the Brownfields Coordinator for the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. And my job is to work with cities and towns to help them through this type of process in getting brownfields cleaned up and turn them from liabilities into assets. And I have to say, just kind of a little editorial, I see a lot of brownfields, and this project has the feel of something that will be successful. To make a project successful, it takes some courage on the part of the town and the towns' people and the town officials. It takes some vision of to know where you're going, and it seems that the town has that. And, well, just some courage. And so that's my soapbox. But I promised that I would talk about the liability relief programs. The state has three different liability relief programs that can help somebody that acquires a brownfield to be shielded from some of the liability that goes with it. Now, go through them, just so that you know what the three programs are, and which one that I feel, and Susan and I and the selectmen have discussed this, would be the best one. And the first one is a program called the Municipal Liability Relief Program, and that is administered by the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection that I work for. And that is a program that a town or a city can apply to before they acquire a property, and it does not require the site be cleaned up in accordance with our cleanup standards and regulations. It gives the town, think of it as a holding pattern, basically, that the town can hold on to the property, and they have to be good stewards of the property. If there's contaminated soil that kids could be exposed to, they have to prevent kids from being exposed to it. If there's pits that somebody could fall into, they have to prevent that from happening. It's just kind of common sense stuff, but the town is not required to clean the site up in accordance with the regulations. It's a holding pattern, like I said. And that is not intended for properties that the town is going to hold on to in the long term and use for a park or a highway department or whatever the town might want to use it for. Just because, does not require cleanup in accordance with the remediation standard regulations. There's two other programs that are administered by the Department of Economic and Community Development, and they work really closely with us at the DEEP on both of those programs. And the first is called the Abandoned Brownfield Cleanup Program, and the second is called the Brownfield Remediation Revitalization Program. And the programs are very similar, there are some differences, but the thing that they offer in common are, first of all, the town will be exempt from the property transfer program if it entered into this, either of the two programs. It would also offer the town an exemption from the liability for any contamination that's emanating off the site. It could be groundwater, it could be surface water, it could be sediment. If there is stuff flowing off the site, the town would have to stop it from flowing off the site, but anything that's outside the boundaries of the site is not the town's responsibility to assess, and it's not the town's responsibility to clean it up. And the idea is really to get the town off the hook for contamination that flowed outside the boundaries of the site before the town took possession of the property. And essentially, the state is taking responsibility for dealing with that contamination. Between the two programs, there's probably something like 60 sites in the program, and so far, the state has not had to step in to assess or clean up off-site liability for any of the sites in that program. The programs also give the town relief from liability to third parties. It could be, let's say, a neighbor that says, I've been injured financially, or I've been injured my health by exposure to contaminants flowing off of the site. Now, in return for that liability relief, the town would agree to actually clean, well, they've assessed the site, but to finish assessing the site and then clean up the site in accordance with what we call the remediation standard regulations, which are the numbers for soil and groundwater that say how clean is clean. And as Mary said, it's very likely that an environmental land use restriction would be put in place on the property. That's something that's done commonly, and basically, it assures that if some contamin- that if some contamination is left in place underneath the pavement or underneath clean fill or underneath a building, that that will not be disturbed without a plan to make sure that it's dealt with. The town will never pay a fee to enter either of these two programs. The Abandoned Brownfield Cleanup Program wants, and both of these programs, the town has to apply, and they have to be approved by the Department of Economic and Community Development, before the town takes title to the property. We usually say that it takes about 60 days from the time that we receive an application till the time a decision is made on the application. We can sometimes do that more quickly, but I just can't promise that because it depends on how much paperwork is sitting on people's desks. One of the other benefits of both of these programs is that as the Brownfield Coordinator at DEEP, a site in one of these programs gets some expedited handling within DEEP. If there's a permit that's needed or a variance that's requested or required, or if that environmental land use restriction that we talked about is needed, one of my jobs is to make sure that things keep moving within DEEP. Not that anything would ever sit on somebody's desk at the state, but my job is to make sure it doesn't, that that doesn't happen. So anyhow, the town, if they entered the Abandoned Brownfield Cleanup Program, the town would have to pay a $3,250 fee to DEEP once they acquire the property, and the town would then enter what we call our voluntary remediation program, and they would hire a licensed environmental professional to oversee the cleanup of the site. And when the site is finally cleaned up, at least within the boundaries of the site, that LEP, Licensed Environmental Professional, would send a report to DEEP that documents how the assessment was done and how the cleanup was done and why the LEP feels that the site has been cleaned up in accordance with our regulations. And this actually would happen also in the Brownfield Remediation Revitalization Program, and then DEEP would look at that report, and we would decide whether it needs to be audited or not. And basically, we're looking in deciding whether it needs to be audited for what we call red flag conditions. If we think that the LEP did a good job in assessing and cleaning up the site, the chances are, we would not audit that verification. If that happened, we would issue a letter that says we're not going to audit, and that is pretty much your clean bill of health under either one of those programs, the Abandoned Brownfield Cleanup Program or the Brownfield Remediation Revitalization Program. Now, the Brownfield Remediation Revitalization Program, one difference between that and the Abandoned Brownfield Cleanup Program is the Brownfield Remediation Revitalization Program provides a very clear path if the town decides, after they get the site cleaned up or even during the process of cleaning it up, that they want to transfer it to a private developer. It provides a very clear path for that private developer to apply to the program, and as long as the private developer can prove that they didn't cause the contamination, they don't have any relationship with whoever caused the contamination, which the town would have to prove too, then that private developer can get the same benefits. The private developer will have to pay a fee to get into the Brownfield Remediation Revitalization Program, and the fee is equal to 5% of the assessed value of just the land, no buildings or other improvements on the site, based on the most recent grant list. So it's a really easy calculation based on the field card. And you can think of that fee as kind of an insurance premium that compensates the taxpayers, the state taxpayers, for the risk that they are taking by essentially extending this liability protection. That money actually gets deposited in a fund that we can dip into if we ever need to assess and clean up off-site contamination. Again, so far, I said, that hasn't happened, and I would say, based on everything that I know about the site and everything that we've discussed with the town about the different liability relief programs, I think that Brownfield Remediation Revitalization Program is the most appropriate and probably best path forward. For those of you that are into legal, technical stuff, that's Connecticut General Statute So I would recommend that the town go forward. And I also have to say, with the Brownfield Remediation Revitalization Program, I would also have to say that I work for a regulatory agency, but DEEP's approach, and especially the Brownfield Program that I work in, is that we are here to work with cities and towns, and we are not looking to take enforcement action, and we are looking to just really work cooperatively, and we have the same goals, I think, that the town does, and that is getting the site cleaned up and put back to productive use. So thanks, and I can answer questions at the end if anybody has any.
So I think at this point, Sharon has the names of people that signed up, and if you could, maybe Jim could bring the list over so that I'll call their name.
Okay. If I call your name and you don't want to speak, that's fine, and if you didn't sign up, we'll make sure that you have time to speak. So the first person whose name here is Bill Caffrey. Bill? Bill lives at 59 Paley Farm Road.
Hello. You've probably seen some of my comments on Facebook. It's, I think, a real positive thing for Portland, and I'm really looking forward to seeing this thing go forward.
Thanks, Bill. The next person who signed up is Greg Piazza from Breezy Corners Road. Greg?
Thank you. So I'm Greg Piazza. I'm a member of the Economic Development Commission, and as a member of the Economic Development Commission, I want to say that this is an initiative that we heavily support, and we've had lots of discussions around this, about this internally. And a couple of things that keeps coming up, we hear people talking about, there's a lot of questions that people have, things around, you know, why would you want to potentially put a parking lot across the street? You know, why are we going to pay our money to, you know, just sink it into the ground? You know, there's blight there. Why would we be rewarding the people who had blight there? There's a lot of questions around, you know, what are you going to actually do with it? Don't buy it until you know exactly what you want to do with it. To the Economic Development Commission and to me, I think there's really two really important questions. One, is this a good investment of the town's money? And two, if it's not a good investment of the town's money, are we willing to live with the ramifications of what will happen to that place if we don't buy it? Those are, to me, the only two really important questions that there are. So the first question, is it a good investment of the town's money? So there seems to be a lot of confusion about whether, and I think Susan brought this up, this is, money doesn't need to be borrowed. It's not going to be dipped into other funds that were earmarked for something else. This is funds that are set aside for purchasing land. So is there a better use of the money that's already there, or is this something that we can get our money back on? You know, we've come through many different scenarios of how this land could be used for either, like I said, the parking lot for next, for across the way. There's utilizing the river. There's, you know, having different developments come in. It's, you know, leasing the land, it's selling the land. To remake $385,000 is easy to do with this land. This is not going to be a problem. The question then is, if it, even if it wasn't a good use of the land, of the money, which I think, we all think that it is a very good use of the money, and you are going to get your investment back, the question then becomes, what happens to this land, and what happens to this area if it just continues to either stay how it is, or, as Mary said, it becomes another place where people are just going to start storing equipment? You know, if you look at the brownstone quarries, we've made more than our money back. We have a great area. It's one of the things that Portland is now known for, and it's brought in tons of people and a lot of visibility for Portland. We could end up with a situation that looks just like that there. So I guess, for me, I don't see the downside here of purchasing it, and I see a lot of downside in letting it continue the way it is and not getting remediated. Thank you.
Darlene Rice and Dean Susie?
I'm from Portland. I was born and raised here. My mother, Mary Louise Rice, many of you know, was also a townie. She was instrumental in the building of the senior center here. I consider myself a very dedicated townie. Nine weeks ago, I became co-owner of what my husband, Dean Susie, and I are now calling Quarry View. It's an historic 6.2-acre parcel of the brownstone quarry located at 311 Brownstone Avenue. We have over 300 Facebook followers, all anxiously watching daily to see what changes occur. To us, it was Jurassic Park because it was filled with prickers and poison ivy, but now we're bringing it back to its natural state of exposed brownstone ledges and rocks. Dean and I, with no defined vision, knew we wanted to own a piece of this town's 300-plus year-old history. We are restoring with no set plan, the history and the view, to bring this area back to life for others to enjoy. The area along Brownstone Avenue has a magnificent brownstone park that's enjoyed by scores of people, local and out of town yearly, with weddings, music, natural sights, sounds, and walkways. We have an amazing adventure and discovery water park that thousands of people from Massachusetts, New York, New Jersey, Rhode Island, Pennsylvania, Maryland, along with state residents, come to by car, school bus, and tour buses. There was a vision in that overgrown water area that was littered with discarded cars. Many times, people in this town could not see its potential. They voiced their opinions as to not doing, not changing, not growing, and yet, look at that park today. It truly is an amazing place to be. Growth must happen if we're to move forward in this town and increase our revenue. The name of this town is Portland. It means land surrounding a harbor. We were part of Chatham until 1841, and our name comes from Portland, England, a place known for its freestone quarries. The purchase of the waterfront property can only be a plus to this town. The monies to help clean up this location, as far as I know to this point tonight, are available for us to do that. To think that someone else will step in and take this task on leaves the questions, where are they and why haven't they to this point? There's profitability in an area that has such high visibility and access to the Connecticut River, and we, as the town residents and taxpayers, have an opportunity to purchase this land for revitalization, renovation, ownership, rental, or resale. I'm encouraging the people of Portland to put aside your constant fear of rising taxes and think about the advantage of increased revenue and ownership of one of the largest areas of access and beauty of the Connecticut River. Mary, you said something I quote right in here. Portland cannot grow if we remain status quo. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person, Margaret Ko. From Redberry Lane. Hi, Margaret.
Okay, so Margaret Ko, I've been a resident in Portland for almost 50 years, watched a lot of things come and go, but what I personally think this is a wonderful idea, and I would really like to thank everybody who's put so many years of work, not just hours into it, and the preparation, which I think answered so many questions. And I would like to say, when we're talking about river access, to bring Wayne Andrus to mind, Wayne was the person who, in the brownstone quorum, was always trying to find access to the river in Portland, so hopefully that will be part of the eventual plan. Thanks, but really thank everybody for the work.
Robert Muir from Clearview Drive? Okay, thank you. Phyllis Clark, Sherwood Court. Phyllis, pass. Janet Ellsworth, Riverview Street?
Darlene's a hard act to follow. I don't have anything prepared. My husband and I live on the river. We live over by Portland Boat Works, and every year we watch all the boats go by. We watch the river go up and down. It's, the river is the town's asset, and I'm just here to tell you that we support it. Well, I support it. I think he does. We should never, ever, ever give up any part of our riverfront. We need to develop this. We need to, we need to buy it. We need to develop it, and we need to keep it. Thank you.
Bud Harmon? All set, Bud? Okay. Chris and Donna Cody? Jackie Etheridge? Okay. John and Susan Hall? John?
John is Main Street.
Hello. I am a resident here, but I'd also like to speak just briefly on behalf of the Jonas Center for Earth and Art, which is an environmental advocacy organization that's been involved in Middletown and in Portland, involved in such projects as the Airline Trail, and we wrote a letter in support of this project in 2016. Because we are very familiar with similar brownfield remediation projects in Middletown, which we have also supported and advocated for, those projects have all gone very smoothly. You can see the redevelopment that's happened as a result of them, and I, the only other thing I would like to say is, in terms of the value of this property, either one of these elements would be an overwhelming positive thing. Being across the street from a location that attracts 80,000 to 100,000 people a year, that is a great economic opportunity just by that fact. The other one is it's on the shore of the Connecticut River. That just by itself is an overwhelmingly powerful economic opportunity. You put those two together, look at the location. It's just a strip of land between the two. It has to be great, so we're all for it.
Sean Manning, Rogers Road? Thanks, Sean. Dave Murphy, Carousel Drive?
I'll probably be the only one that comes across as negative. I don't want to be that way, so I'm going to read what I've prepared here. I've been probably a proponent on Facebook of asking the questions, not so much saying it's good or bad, but just asking questions. And I'm totally against this, but I am disappointed by the energy and effort expanded by our leaders in this community. Why don't we see that with our other critical needs in this town? I mean, every meeting, I go to every meeting as part of the Board of Education. I come to the selectmen, and none of our other critical capital needs or anything are talked about. Everything's about this purchased property. So I just want to raise a couple of questions that I want us all to ponder when we go to the vote. The first thing that bothered me was when I did the walkthrough, I saw the blight there. Yeah, the other property is blighted, but it's overgrown too. It's a safety issue, and I brought that to the attention of the selectmen, that if you can see, that I watched the explorer, the 80,000 visitors we get a year to see this ugliness of the, they can't even trim the fence, and it forces people to walk outside the walking path into uncoming traffic, but I guess we don't care about that. Another point of reference I want to talk about is when we talk about this is coming from a fund. Keep in mind that fund is, was put there by the taxpayers. It didn't come out of thin air. That's money they put aside every year out of your tax money. We don't put any money aside for capital expenses or fixing any of our infrastructure or working on the schools. We put it aside for open space. The next thing is the cost. I appreciate the selectwoman giving us a total of the cost because I had something I'd asked about, and it's really not $381,000. It's actually $412,000 that we will spend on this property at a minimum just to get there. So we've already spent some of the money, but she's talking about what we will spend at the end of this process, so it's already money that we've already spent. The thing that concerns me the most is the what-ifs, and I know that, you know, Mary said there's a lot of what-ifs, and that's the thing that scares the heck out of me. The only thing she can concretely say is it will be a parking lot. That's our fallback plan, is it will be a parking lot if anything else. But the other part that scares me, and I don't have an answer for this, is that we have a fallback plan that we're going to sell it if we can't get anybody to do anything with it. Well, if we feel that confidence isn't there for somebody that wants to do something with we feel that confidence isn't there for somebody that wants to do something with it, why do we need that fallback plan? And if we have a fallback plan, where does that money go? Because we're using open space funding that the town is expecting to have as open space, yet on the other side, we're going to think about selling it. So it's kind of a conflict there of what we really want to do with this. I know we're going to form a committee, and again, I'm just getting people to think about these things as we go to vote in a couple of weeks. Because my opinion is, is, you know, the other thing we've, I've heard on there, maybe a visitor center or a historical thing. Again, one of the other big concerns with this property as a taxpayer is that a lot of the stuff we think about doing is going to cost money. Even if we put a parking lot in, it's going to cost a couple of grand to put the, the striping down. If we want to do anything, it's going to cost money. So just keep that in mind. This is not a $300,000 or $412,000 project. It's going to be a lot more than that when we get down to the next phase. Again, one of my, I'm going to get off on a soapbox here, but I, I'm on the Board of Education. I'm passionate. And, and one of the things is I attended the Long Range Capital Improvement Commission report, or Committee this year, and they sent out a report, and I'm going to quote here, "In trying to keep up with the first selectman's request of 405,000 total general fund appropriations, which is an increase of zero from last year's appropriation, the commission came up with the following list. The commission requests that funding for the capital budget needs to be increased steadily the next two to three years to get an appropriate funding level to meet expenditures and start doing some long-range planning." So again, I know it's a little bit off-topic, but I just want to keep us focused on some of the other needs in town and not spend all our energy on this. Thank you.
Since you brought Mary's quote up, Dave, I just wanted her to have a chance to...
I would like to clarify, if I could. I was asked if there was a plan that could raise any revenue in the interim between the time that the parcel was remediated and public access was allowed, and the time at which the parcel was either sold or development could begin to occur. So I wrote a memo in June, and in that memo, I estimated, in talking with six other communities that have public parking areas, that for an expenditure of $15,000, we could obtain a parking meter, a stationary meter that you cash cards in, as a way to look at what you could generate for revenue. I have never, and it is in writing, it was not stated verbally, it is in writing in a memo from June that was handed out, I have never stated that this property was intended to be purchased for a parking lot. I have received Facebook messages. I have received email messages that have been negative and accusatory that this is my plan for the community and questioning my professional abilities. There was never a time that this was ever intended to be, nor will it be, a parking lot. Now, Mr. Murphy has said that I stated that. I did not. I would like to know when. I would like to know where, because it is in writing that it would be an interim way to generate revenue as an example of what could be done with the parcel before development after the parcel was cleaned. And I really want to make that clear, because when I start getting personal emails to my email account and personal Facebook messages on social media attacking me because someone is out there saying something that I said that I did not say, it makes me exceptionally angry. As for the blight, our blight officer works in my office. I do not work in blight. However, Lincoln White is our building official and our blight officer. There was a blight report made on this property. Because there is contamination that needs to be remediated, the blight cannot be addressed. So if you look at the map, you'll see the number of areas that have been identified. To go out and to pull trees and shrubs and weeds out of the asphalt means that you're disturbing that soil. And because this is an active site that is being looked at for contamination, for remediation, they cannot go out. There is an exemption in our town blight ordinance for properties that are undergoing construction or active things like remediation. So that is the reason that, yes, this property has been cited for blight, but we cannot enforce somebody to go out and clean the property up because of the contamination. So it is not that the blight has not been addressed. Our ordinance has an exemption for properties that are in construction phase or are undergoing something like this where there's a potential for building and there's a potential for blight. So I really want to clear that up because it bothers me that people take their information from social media when we have a town hall that's open 40 hours a week, and this information is available in writing that you can read and you can research and that you can find out on your own. So thank you. I appreciate Susan giving me the opportunity to clarify that.
The next name is Tim Lavoy from Chatham. Hello, okay. And Brian Gagnon from High Street. Brian?
Thank you for hearing me tonight. Most people don't like to, so thanks for being a cop to the audience. So the first, first thing I want to do is just thank everybody for their time that they've put into investigating this. I've only been a resident of Portland for four years. I did not grow up here. I grew up in northeast Connecticut, up by UConn's stores campus. So as a relatively newcomer to town, I just want to kind of speak from a newcomer's perspective, if that's interesting to you guys. So one of the things that I've noticed is that there doesn't seem to be a lot of riverfront use in this area. So as an avid kayaker, I like to, you know, go across to Middletown, to the boat launch out there. Sometimes East Hattam. I have, at times, looked for a place to put my kayak in on the Portland shores and not found one legally. So, so I do think that, you know, there are some real potential along our shores, and I would certainly love to see that come to fruition. There was some mention earlier of the riverfront property that we already have, the Riverfront Park. Again, as a newcomer, I'm not sure what might have arrested the development of either a public boat launch or fishing area or whatever along that area. I don't know if that's still in the plans. I want to give that a high five if it is and speak in favor of that. But I think that because there is a limited amount of riverfront use in the area right now, Portland might have a great opportunity in this to be a leader in economic development along the riverfront, drawing people into that, that space to, you know, to celebrate the river and to take advantage of that. But also because of our, I think, really great strategic positioning along Route 9, Route 17, Route 66, it's a, an easy access point for people to, to come and use that area, and I think it might actually draw a crowd, which would be great for our local businesses. And, and to that point, one of the things that I, one of the experiences that I've had coming from stores is I, I used to live in stores and work in the town of Mansfield, which is, you know, stores a part of. Stores recently developed a stores down, like store center downtown section, and that was a, a public-private partnership. When they did that, they expanded their grand list significantly. One of the drawbacks that I saw was that they allowed a private contractor to essentially take over the parking situation there, and, and so that I believe they contracted with like a Laz parking or whatever. As the recipient of, of a parking ticket in Stores Mansfield, I can tell you that I did not appreciate that. So when we talk about pay-for-parking, I just want to encourage us to think about not paying for parking, because I found that it was really a discouraging force for me in terms of patronizing those local businesses that I was interested in when I was then either paying for parking, parking, or forgetting that I had parked there for five minutes longer than was, you know, allowed and receiving a parking ticket, which they were very diligent in providing to me. So I actually wrote a letter to the town of Mansfield, and I said, "Listen, I don't like getting penalized for, for utilizing your businesses and your, you know, the, the business that you're trying to bring into town. I want to support them, but I don't want to support parking tickets." So I told them I would never come back, and I didn't. So now I live in Portland. So with that in mind, I wanted to just kind of speak to like the Facebook mentality here because, you know, Mark Zuckerberg decided that he was not going to charge Facebook users, and the reason is because Facebook wasn't cool enough to charge people to use it, yet. And then what he did is he found a different way of making money on the deal. So now he is obviously very wealthy, has done very well with Facebook, and he did it by making it free. And that is, I think, something for us to consider as we think about how we want to draw people in. I love the idea of bringing people in for all of the awesome things that we have, you know, a developed waterfront, great businesses, maybe a nice, you know, Main Street full of, of newer rejuvenated businesses to attract them and not make them pay for parking. I hate paying for parking. Does anybody like paying for parking? I mean, really? So, so that's just, I'll shut up about the parking now. The next thing I want to talk about is just the future of Portland. So again, as a relative newcomer to the town, I want to know where we're headed as much as probably anybody else does. And one of the things that I would love to do is stop driving to Glastonbury for things like being able to have, sit down in a nice coffee shop and, you know, read a book, or go to Whole Foods and get some organic spinach for $5 a pound. So I would love to do that in the town of Portland. So I'm hoping that we're going to have more of those things coming into town as well. I would, I would really like to remain here, and as a, a single non-parent who doesn't utilize a lot of town services, I want to keep paying taxes. So to the town of Portland and not utilize a whole lot of services, which is probably something that we could benefit from if we get more young people who aren't necessarily, you know, utilizing the school systems right now or utilizing some of the other town services as much. So I would love to see more people, maybe like myself, who are coming in to, to enjoy Portland for everything it has to offer. And so with that in mind, I think about the Main Street area, and I love the fact that the riverfront is so close to the Main Street, and I see some really great opportunities in linking a nicely-developed riverfront area with a perhaps revitalized Main Street area. And as I drive up and down Main Street on my way to work, or to Sarah's, which is the most amazing restaurant I have ever found, Sarah's on Main, go there, it, it sometimes saddens me that, you know, I see some, some properties in the area that look like they could use a facelift. And so I thought to myself, what if we were to follow the Stores' example to some degree, where we are maybe pursuing a public-private partnership in revitalizing this area and spurring either new or continued economic development there, giving it a facelift, drawing people in so that I don't have to drive up to Glastonbury to look really sharp with my, you know, coffee in hand and my organic spinach. I can do that here and walk along the sidewalks here in Portland. So that is just one of the things I wanted to, to speak to. I don't know if that is something that the town has ever thought about exploring, but I would love to see maybe a tax abatement on businesses that want to reinvest in their, in their, their capital and their, and their hard structures, their, their buildings and things, maybe giving it that facelift that I think we could maybe benefit from, and drawing more folks in, you know, stealing some of those, those dollars from, from Glastonbury and Middletown, because I think they want to give them to us. Honestly, I do. And so, yeah, that's, that's just kind of how I'm looking at Portland. I'm really excited to be here. Thanks for allowing me to be a resident, and I hope to, to meet more of you at Sarah's, because it's great. Go to Sarah's. It's great. All right. That's all I got. Thanks.
Okay, that's a good one. So I wanted to just answer one of, of Mr. Gagnon's questions, and that is the boat launch story, which is a rich story in, in terms of our, our trying to get access to the Connecticut River. Some of you may remember back in about 2004 through '06, we bought some land, actually it was a swap with the Fish and Game Club. They swapped land. We gave them some land in the Bacawset Meadows, and we got some land right on the Connecticut River in the Wongonk Meadows. And we were working with the state marine folks, and we were very close to being able to put a public boat launch there using state and federal dollars. And it was discovered through the natural diversity database that there's a, a Puritan tiger beetle that lives in this area, and as such, we were unable to access the federal and state money because they actually live on Gildersleeve Island, and the concern was the boats would queue up on the island and kill the Puritan tiger beetles during mating season, and then they would become further endangered and so forth. So we abandoned that at that point, even though we did offer to foster care for the beetles in another area, which has happened. I think it was one of the Windsors that did this, and in fact, they, they set up some foster camps for the beetles, and they're living happily ever after in other locations. I think the DEEP commissioner at the time felt sorry for me because I cried a lot when I talked to her. So she gave a $100,000 grant to Portland, and we did an investigation of a boat launch that Jim Tripp had pointed out right adjacent to this land that we're looking to acquire. And it would involve a little bit more maneuvering in terms of how that boat launch would be set up, but we have the plans. They're sitting in my office. So far, there's no Puritan tiger beetles in this area, but as I said, we have a plan if that should occur. So having this land available would enhance the area because, number one, as I said, I'm just going to repeat myself, that this economic development driver is why we're doing this, because as Mr. Murphy pointed out, there are a lot of needs that our town has, and I don't see anybody coming in, unlike Mr. Gagnon, who really wants to pay more taxes. What we want to do is make this a better town, and in order to do that, we need to continually look at how we partner and how we reinvest and how we capitalize on our natural resources. And certainly, the Connecticut River is a natural resource that we can and, we can and we have in the past, it's our history, been able to capitalize on. So with that, I'll ask for other hands. This gentleman? Sure?
The first is, is on the frequently asked questions.
Sure.
Can I get a copy of that because I don't want to duplicate a question?
Yes.
Secondly, I lived in Lassenbury for 36 years, and I moved back to Portland to Lavoy's spinach. But I grew up in Portland, a long time ago, and I live on Cox Road. So my question, it seems to me this is fairly basic, and the basic part of it is, is that if it doesn't, if you buy it, the worst case, it sounded those from the Economic Development Commission as you sell it. So the first question is, is that on the $750,000 grant plus $400,000, is there additional exposure in addition to the $750,000? Could it cost more to clean it up? So what is the top-end cost after the grant plus the $400,000? And then while you can't come up with a value for the 5.2 acres, you certainly can come up with an approximate value of what commercial property is worth down there. And so it seems to me is that if the top end is $1.4 million less the grant, so the exposure to the town is $800,000, is the 5.2 acres based on current commercial property, are you going to be able to sell it for that? So what's the exposure above the grant, and what is commercial property currently going for? And it seems to me is that if it is a positive result to the town, then the town ought to buy it. If it is a negative result because of the additional exposure, then everybody has to really think of that. So there, I don't know if that's one of your frequently asked questions.
I think some of the questions do touch on that, and I can tell you what, what I know from having been here a while and having worked on this. The property was originally, I think they were asking over $800,000 for the properties as a working tank farm. I do know that a property further south of this property was sold by Safety Clean. It has an ELUR on it, and it sold for $500,000 in 2002. It has an ELUR on it, and it sold for $500,000 in 2017. And that is a working operation. Ed Belageron owns that, and he does rent it out. I don't have the facts and figures as to how his business is progressing, but he's certainly a viable business and a very valuable member of our community. In terms of other values of this property, the assessor, as I said earlier, has said it's worth about $600,000. But that's it, it's certain.
Quite frankly, that's silly.
Yeah.
What is the exposure over and above the 750 that you get for the grant? Is that, once you pay the 400, is there an exposure to the cleanup over and above the 750 grant, and what is the exposure maximum? And so it seems to me the numbers are very simple. Is if the exposure is additional 700,000, the net out-of-town cost is $1.1 million. Is 5.2 acres worth $1.1 million?
Right. There is a 20% contingency on that 750,000, which I mentioned earlier. In terms of exposure, we have done a tremendous amount of investigation on this property. And I, I'm going to have Mark Lewis address that since he's been working on brownfields a lot longer than I have. So we'll have Mark Lewis respond to that as well.
I'll try to be honest.
I hope I'm not taking it that way because I'm not, thank you.
Yeah, no, no, thanks for the question. I think it's good to fully vet things and get answers to your questions. I worked with a consultant that did the Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 3 site assessment on this before, and I have no reason to believe that the consultant has not done a good job on, with the investigation, and that she has not done a good job in figuring out to the best of her ability what it's going to cost to clean the site up. You can never prove a negative, so I can't stand here and absolutely guarantee you that there won't be additional expenses beyond that. But as Susan knows, there is a 20% contingency built into, into the cost. That's pretty much standard stuff in putting together cost estimates. And so I think you can have some confidence because the licensed environmental professional has used her years of professional expertise in putting this estimate together. The other thing to say is that the, I don't speak for the Department of Economic and Community Development, but I don't work for them, but they have the ability to some extent, if there are legitimate costs, I don't want to say cost overruns, but if it turns out that the cost of remediating is more than originally thought, DECD can in some cases give additional money. I believe it's up to 50% of the value of the grant. Right now, DECD doesn't have any additional money because their budget has not been put together. But when DECD entertains requests like that, they come to us and they ask us for our opinion. And as long as we are satisfied that it was a legitimate request, and it wasn't because the site wasn't well assessed, then we generally recommend, yes, you should approve this.
My last question, the maximum exposure is 20% of 750,000 or 150,000 plus the 400. So the problem, 99% of the cost is going to be 550,000. Is that accurate?
It's, yeah, it's hard to say, say exactly. But, but yeah, I think you can have reasonable confidence, like I said, that the licensed-
Why doesn't the town just say the maximum cost is going to be five, probably 550,000? And we think on sale, we can get that or more back?
You can say it better than I. I mean, that, but that's, well, that's why you're here, to say, I have to be, honestly, I have to be very, and I always have operated my, my job this way. I'll tell you everything I know, but I don't, I don't work in theoreticals, and I don't work in maybe this or maybe that. I tell you the facts, and I try to get experts that come to us to help us. But I'm very careful not to oversell you, so to speak. I want to be as honest as I can and tell you all the positives and tell you all the negatives. And then it's certainly, because every single one of you in this room are highly intelligent, you make your decision based on that. I can also tell you another thing that's been alluded to, but maybe not articulated exactly the way I'm going to, because I'm probably one of the only people in the room that at the time, the Board of Selectmen made a really, really courageous move, and that was to buy the riverfront quarries and the riverfront property. That was in 1999. We sat at this table, well, it was an old table, and we talked about whether or not we were going to buy the property, which is the 40 acres of water and then the 2,000 feet of riverfront, or was a developer from New York going to come in and either put apartments in there, or was somebody going to come in and store waste on that riverfront. And we made the decision to take $1,050,000 and buy the quarries and buy the riverfront. There was $600,000 in cash that we took out of the undesignated fund balance, and $400,000 that that property at the time owed the town in terms of back taxes and back water and sewer fees. We, we took a huge, huge risk. And the town was behind us on that. They voted yes to buy that property, and we worked, as Mary indicated earlier, on some studies. And we came forward, and we've cleaned up that riverfront. If you've been to the four concerts we had this summer, over 500 people come a night. We have weddings down there. We've worked and partnered with the state, and they've given us nearly $1 million to improve the road, put in a new water main, put in new sidewalks from Main Street to Middlesex Avenue, to put in a parking lot, to put in a stage pavilion, to put in water, to put in electricity, a stage, a pavilion. We have a Boy Scout that's going to be putting in a new gazebo on the riverfront. And we forged an agreement with Brownstone Exploration and Discovery Park for 25 years, starting in 2005, and the owner of Brownstone is here tonight. And we didn't know what we were going to do. We didn't know if this was ever going to work. We didn't know if they'd even show up the next day. But they did. They cleaned up a very blighted property, along with Brownstone Quorum, which is represented by a lot of people in this room, and they used their sweat equity to clean up that quarry, to make it advantage to a business. And since that time, we get 20% of their gate. In 2019, we got $395,000 return just on the gate. They pay about $45,000 a year in personal property tax, and between $4,000 and $5,000 a year to water and sewer. They also bring between 80,000 and 100,000 people to this little strip of land in Little Portland. What, what the town planners, as Mary indicated, what the town selectmen, what the volunteers in Brownstone Quorum have done, because their charge is to preserve and protect this national historic landmark, which is the Brownstone Quarries, and as an adjunct, make the riverfront available to us. We have been able to really forge a wonderful economic development, private-public partnership story that's still going on. And it's not perfect. There's lots of people that could come and give me complaints about these things all the time, but we use those complaints to do a better job the next day. And it's the same plan that we have for this property that's adjacent to there. And it seems the best indication to bring this to you, present you with all this information, and hopefully you agree with us and will proceed to have another, another endeavor that will be very successful for our community. I'm going to call on Sean Hayes from Brownstone Exploration Discovery Park, if he'd be willing to say a few words to us. Sean?
Sir, never, never lose a moment. I'm not a current politician, so I'm going to start there. I'm not maybe a future politician to the area. I'm not even a resident of Portland, so let me be very frank, but I am a taxpayer. Okay? So there's a lot of numbers being thrown around tonight. I brought my own set of numbers. Okay? What has the town done with the purchase back in 1999? The contracts that this town went ahead and took the risk with three brothers from Glastonbury, let's stop bashing Glastonbury a little bit, in 2005? What did that contract return to this town? Directly since 2005, when we signed this, the town has paid, the town directly over $4 million coming out of that operation. But that's not the true economics. The true economics is $14 million. We employ 250 of our residents in this community and others around this area, giving our young adults, marginally, work experience out there in the real world, and that is over $9 million in payroll to this local community. So what has it returned on a $1 million purchase to this community? Significance. I've also heard backup plans, contingencies, and everything else about this property. Does Brownstone Exploration and Discovery Park endorse this plan? Without a doubt. From day one, I went to the state with Susan. Okay? This riverfront development is critical for the community and the businesses around it. Okay, we do bring 80,000, hopefully 95 this year, okay, 1,000 people to this market. But I want to put a word of caution or, or your backup, to, in order to continue to generate $14 million to this community, don't forget about us. We are using that as parking lot. We can't generate this revenue without the ability to put people on this parcel. We don't have good parking. Parking is critical. We're sending them all the way down to the end of Brownstone and all the way up to Middlesex Avenue. So even, I heard a contingency, or what is the total exposure here? The exposure to the town is, they're going to invest, let's use a number, $600,000, just to maintain and grow Brownstone Park and continue to contribute $14 million every 10 years, it's worth the acquisition. Point blank. Don't do anything with the property. But now, if you now develop it even further, it's all the plus. But again, caution, some portion of this property, I'm sorry, I'm going to get greedy, you can't continue to generate these numbers to the town without putting those people somewhere, and I'm with you, without the meters. Okay? Our biggest asset against, we're not Six Flags. We've always kept it true. Get our kids back out and climb a wall, and yes, get a 30-second thrill ride. But it's, we don't have the capital or the ability to compete with Six Flags, who charges $5 parking? Our biggest asset is free parking and bring your own food. It's what drives the 85,000 to 95,000 customers a year. Don't forget about them. Please. And now, I'm done.
Okay, I'll open it up to others. Kim?
I have a question. About the property that's being remediated.
Sure.
What does remediation entail? What is the capital cost?
Mark, do you want to comment on that? I have it all written down there, but again, I'm going to call on the expert.
I can only speak very generally because I have not read through the remedial action plan myself, but my understanding is a lot of the contamination is not surprisingly petroleum-type stuff. So generally, when there's petroleum-type stuff, some proportion of it needs to be dug up, and the contaminated soil needs to be hauled away. Generally, that's a relatively small portion of, of the cleanup. In many cases, our remediation standard regulations allow contaminated soil to be left in place underneath buildings, underneath paved parking lots, underneath sidewalks, or if there's enough thickness of clean fill, usually it's four feet of clean fill, underneath clean fill. And, and if, that can save a lot of money on the cleanup costs, and that's where you record an environmental land use restriction to ensure that that soil that's left in place and whatever clean fill or structure is protecting it is not disturbed. So generally, it's a combination of excavating and hauling off some portion of the soil, and I, I can't tell you exactly what that portion is, and then rendering the rest of it what they call inaccessible, so that people cannot come in contact with it and, and become sickened from being in contact with it, and also so that rainfall and melting snow doesn't leach through the soil and leach it down, leach the contamination down to the water table and cause contamination of the groundwater. So, does that answer your question?
So the question where you're saying you have to actually remove, are those called the hotspots or the project?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, the, yeah, the question is if the areas where you actually have to dig up and haul away contaminated soil, if they're called hotspots, and that's exactly right. That's a, that actually really is the term that's, that's used in the industry, hotspot excavation.
And that's what you feel the grant covers, the quality of the cover, things of that were removed or just capished or buried?
It, it seems as if it, it seems as if that's the case, and to me, I, like I said, I have not read through the remedial action plan, but based on, on my experience with the company that put it together, and the particular individual within that company that put it together, I have a reasonable confidence that, that it's been well assessed and that you can rely with some level of confidence on the figures.
And you can't have the vote to, um, the bond commission or whatever, because that is a reading lately. This governor, as we say on staff, I think, as well, his last committee, he's not funded many of these different grants that have been announced, have been presented. And do these follow the best interest of the people?
Well, I, I don't work for the Department of Economic and Community Development, but based on sitting at some of the meetings with DECD, and Susan was there also. The money for this grant comes from money that has already been allocated by the state bond commission. It's been set aside, and it's waiting for the town to, there's some paperwork that the town will have to enter into with DECD, a grant agreement in order to access the money. But this is not waiting on an allocation by the bond commission, it's money that's already there.
Yes, that's true. The money that, as referred to, the $750,000, Kim, that money has already gone through the bond commission back in 2016. So the dollars have been set aside for us. They don't have to go to the bond commission. The state does. The state does because we haven't, we haven't tapped it. But, and I think, as I said earlier, I think it goes to the fact that this is considered not by the town selectmen, but by the state of Connecticut, who looks at, and I think Mark told us, there's 60 towns, or 60 projects, I should say, that have participated in this liability relief program. They know these projects, and they say that this is, this is a really good project, and the 750,000 is a number that, that we're comfortable with, with the 20% contingency. But again, you know, I could say it's not going to rain in the next hour, it could rain in the next hour. Okay, Bill, thank you. But we, we are, again, we're being very conservative in our approach to this, and we've gotten many experts to help us with it, and I think that what we're bringing to you is a very viable project, and we hope for your continued conversation. The frequently asked questions, Mary, are in the front. I think she brought 50 copies, so if you could have one per household, that would help us. And we're going to get together again next Tuesday. So if you want to reserve your seats, we'll be reserving your seats for next Tuesday. And there may be some additional information that you require. Amy Valencourt from Tye &amp; Bond, who is a licensed environmental professional, was away from work this week, but she will be here on, on Tuesday. And Mark Lewis, his schedule permitting, will also be here again. So if you think of some questions you want to have answered, you can't come, please email my office, and we'll be happy to get you the answers so that, that you can make an informed decision. Any other questions tonight? Yes. Maria? They all have some areas. Most of the work, Maria, will be on 248. And the reason most of the work is on 248, obviously, there are some below storage tanks that need to be taken out, obviously, the five above-ground storage tanks that need to be addressed, the fueling station. There's some building hazards, just as you would have in any old building, some asbestos. So most of the work would be on that project, that parcel, but the other two also have some areas that would need addressing. They too operated with some petroleum industries, but most of the work was done on that 248, as you, as you know, because you've lived here a long time. You've seen it. Any other questions? John?
I just wanted to make a comment on-
Yes, sir.
I was listening to what Mitch said, and Mitch, I have the same question about whether, if there could be a great overrun-
Yes, sir.
I was listening to what Mitch said. I have the same question about whether, if there could be a great overrun on the cost of remediation. And then it just occurs to me when Sean talks, you know, when we took in $4 million, I don't think anybody envisioned that we were going to take in that kind of money. And if all of a sudden, we had to pay $1 million more for remediation, think about the $4 million we made. And all of a sudden, as horrible as it is, it's not as bad, you look at that. And then I've got to say one more thing for nature. That's true. I'm sorry, Sean. The only thing I wanted to say-
Yes, John.
...was blight. I look at this and we were commenting about the blight, that green rope there, that's blight. And I was thinking back 40, 50 years ago, when the riverfront park was probably considered blight.
Yes.
And somehow, nature reclaimed it and made it into a beautiful park.
Yes.
So, blight is in the eye of the beholder.
Well, and for the camera, John is saying, John Lashane is saying that green does grow and comes back and covers some of the sins of the past. And you certainly see it in this case.
I could just add one thing.
Yes.
Disappointing thing that I see, well, I've seen this a little bit on Facebook. The only thing I go on on Facebook is the Portland community, because I think it's crazy stuff. So the disappointing thing to me is that the vision, the one, I think there has to be 90% of the time, what is the downside? And then what is the upside? I don't see anything about what is the upside, other than there may be a restaurant, there may be this, there may be that. But there is no, there is nothing that says, here is what we're thinking about. We're thinking about having a boat watch. I would suggest to you that you stay away from a boat house.
Yes, I agree. Yes, our neighboring towns.
But I don't see the vision and what the cost would be to the vision. I disagree with, with all due respect, that it becomes a parking lot to subsidize a park. And I would, I disagree with that. But I don't see the vision. And so, maybe you can't portray what that vision is, but nowhere do I see it.
Well, I will also comment that Portland prides itself on, when we have vision, we certainly engage. And I think you see that here tonight. That it's not the vision of just the seven selectmen, but it's certainly the vision of the community at large, through our commissions, our boards. And as I stated at the very beginning of tonight, the importance of us establishing a brownfield remediation committee that will say, this is the vision that Portland wants to have happen here. You know, we are a town meeting form of government, the most democratic type of government that you can have, where people have a right to come and say what's wrong, what's right, and what their vision is. But only until you get that camaraderie of all the people together, do you then say, we conclude and this will be our vision and we'll move forward. We've given some ideas for what can happen on this particular parcel. You've seen what's actually happened at the land that was bought in 1999. What actually has happened is not what we exactly envisioned in 1999 at all. I mean, I think that Brownstone Exploration Discovery Park thought they'd have 10 or 20 people come scuba diving in that quarry and maybe a couple people would set up camp down the road. They never thought that it would be a family recreational, regional draw for northeast United States. And that's what it's become. Yes, sir?
How does these people get off this park open? What happens to that property when it's shut down? Seems like momentum shifts in the back towards the parking lot, which Mr. Workman mentioned. As a matter of fact, there's some articles in the press, Portland proposal on riverfront property could bring parking revenue. So, Mr. Anderson gets up and chest dyes, Mr. Workman, we're having a closing review, you're saying, well, we have to leave our views, I guess we should continue to discuss-
We certainly will. Certainly will. And I think, Mr. Sataj, as this gentleman said, there does need to be further visioning. And, but I think, in listening to the hearing tonight, there's some excellent ideas for how this property could proceed to benefit economic development. Certainly, certainly. And I think there's consensus to that effect. Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Do you want to make it up at the microphone? Sure.
Just identify yourself, Michael.
Yeah, Michael Rang, Penfield Hill Road. I don't think you have to look too far to see vision along the Connecticut River and other towns. Old Saybrook, Essex, Haddem. So, you talk about vision, that will come. We need to take the first step and purchase the property.
I'll close with this. One of our residents, who's a landscape architect, Sue Fiedler, she couldn't be here tonight. But in terms of her vision, because she does work in the landscape architecture world, she does have a vision for what this property could become. And I'll leave it at the table here for you to take a look. It's something that would be a first draft for us to take a look at. So if others of you have talent or at least inspiration, please let us know. The selectmen will be happy to pass it on. Does the selectman want to say anything? Do the other board members have anything? Rick?
I'll be brief, because I think everybody's getting tired. To that young man from Glastonbury looking for a kayak site, we hear you. Selectman Lou Pear and I have been walking along the riverfront, trying to find potential access sites beside this site here, which would most likely be for larger boats. But more importantly, to me, this is like something that, as a Portland resident and businessman, for many years, we've talked about redeveloping the riverfront and incorporating it with Main Street, going way back to the 80s and 90s. And now, we finally have an opportunity to procure another piece of land that we could potentially do something with. I think, within reason, regardless what the cost is, it's something we should move forward with. And an old business axiom is, you can't make money without spending money. And as somebody that ran for supermarkets, I spent a lot of money trying to build a business and it paid benefits in the long run. And I think that's the way we have to look at this property, as an economic development engine. And we need to build on what we did with the quarries, which was a big risk when we took that step 20 years ago. And you're right, we have to have the vision. And I think meetings like this, with everybody chiming in, we kick around ideas and hopefully, something good's going to happen from it. But like Greg Piazza said, I don't think we can lose if we get it cleaned up with, we have the state on our team here. And we get it cleaned up and I just think there's tons of options. So, thank you.
Anyone else tonight? Okay, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. And feel free to get your frequently asked questions and take a look at some of the maps. Appreciate you coming out. I'll close the meeting. It's 9:30. Thank you.